Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Board of Work Session for Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. 2:01 PM, my name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have County Manager Emira Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. We have our Director of Community Planning and Economic Development Josh Cummings. Community Planning Manager Jennifer Davis and Caitlin Nelson, one of our planning staff that's integrally involved in the issue of the day, which is our Water Resource Inventory Area 13 Meeting with the Squawson Island Tribe. Jeff Dickerson is here, he's Natural Resources Director, that title Jeff?
Assistant Director.
Assistant Director, and then I'd like to hear, and we have Sharon. Can you introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, thank you. I'm an attorney with the tribe's legal department.
And what is your name?
Sharon Hensley. Do you need me to spell that for you? H A E N S L Y.
Very good, and I'm sure that our third commissioner will be joining us shortly. I am going to let the county manager kind of set up the discussion for today. We have an hour. Here's Commissioner McGee.
Just join us, yeah.
And so county manager will kind of frame this, and I think we should be able to then see right into the presentation.
Good afternoon and welcome you all. This is a continued conversation related to the WIRA, all the many different WIRAs. We have five in the county, and that's a result of what I call is the Hearst Decision fixed the legislature pass in which each of the WIRAs needs to be, needs to be available planned, that needs to be submitted to ecology. And each, and each one of those had a specific deadlines as to one that needs to be submitted to ecology, and I believe the deadline for submission of the WIRA 13 is June 30th of 2021. There has been obviously a group of stakeholders, they have been working on this particular plan, and, and it was a briefing back in September 23, 2020, and where I believe only Commissioner Edwards was, who is present today, was present at that time, Commissioner Mensah was absent, and Commissioner, at that time Commissioner Hutchins was present as well. During that conversation, there was some, an overview of some of where the status of the WIRA 13 was in the process itself, and his staff also provided some feedback, some of the comments and suggestions the Squawson Island Tribe would like to incorporate into this plan. We didn't dive too much into the details of those comments back in September 23rd, 2020, and the board really didn't take in affirmative or negative action related to those comments. So fast forward to this a couple of weeks ago, I was informed that perhaps we need to organize a letter to give the opportunity to the Squawson Island Tribe representatives to express their perspective, and maybe give additional feedback as to what those comments are for the board to consider as we move forward on approval of the, of the WIRA 13 plan. So today, this really is, is a more interactive conversation between the board members in, in the Squawson Island Tribe representatives. I do have to say at the end of this meeting, please don't expect the board to make a decision. This is informational, and this is as to how the board is going to be absorbing that information. We do have a follow-up briefing on the WIRA 13 next week already scheduled, and that will be a good opportunity for the board to hear your perspective today, in, in combination with the briefing the staff is going to be providing next week, and at that point I will ask the board as to how they would like to move forward on this. So that makes sense? So we, with, with that said, I believe we received a, a document from Jeff today, and I believe that is the outline of the items that you'd like to cover today? You mute it.
As a start, yes.
Yeah, please go ahead then.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with the commission on this subject. We of course have been working with your staff for many, many months on this planning process, and we are now shortly going to be faced, our respective governments are faced with whether to approve or reject the plan that is now, has been distributed to the governments for, or the participants for their actions. The Squawson Island Tribe has been participating in four of the, all affecting, all are part of their usual and accustomed area. They are RIA 12, RIA 13, RIA 14, and RIA 15. We have already in the past engaged in the planning process for RIA 11, and that plan of course is already approved, one of the early action plans. What confronts us now is the four remaining that we are addressing. They are in, in various states of completeness in our opinion, and, and I think it's fair to say that we generally do not believe that any of them are complete. They fall short in, in several respects, but they vary in the details, and they vary in the relationship to the other respective governments that we would ultimately work with, presuming a plan that has for implementation. So this is why we requested the opportunity to talk with you folks about RIA 13. In some ways, it may have the, the best standing as, again, from our perspective, as to whether it's viable and whether it's implementable. But even at that, it has shortcomings, and we wanted to begin the discussion today of some of those shortcomings, and we earlier today circulated to you folks a memo that, that Sharon has worked on. I would say that Sharon's been involved in this all through the process, and we have had extensive communications with ecology about our different interpretations of what's required by the law, and those communications are all a matter of public record. This is a, this memo we provided to you today is a boiled down version of some specific issues that are related to whether rulemaking is required on, on the part of the Department of Ecology, and specifically this would entail opening up the rule on RIA 13 watershed and correcting some of the deficiencies that we note in that. So at this point, I want to allow Sharon to go over the points that she has outlined in her memo.
Thanks Jeff. Well, I'll try, but I may not succeed in, in, I don't want to just read from the, my memo. I'm hoping it's an interactive discussion and that you interrupt me with questions as I go, and again, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you today. So, so the RIA 13 rule, it's old and it's pretty darn defective, and it's not that dissimilar to the RIA 12, or 14, or 15 rules. Basically, all of the South Sound Stream Flow rules were drafted in the 1980s. I think the RIA 13 one might be the oldest, it was adopted in 1980, and that's, was at a time when ecology was just beginning to put together the pieces of how groundwater and surface water were connected. And so you look at more modern rules today that ecology's issued for various watersheds, like look at the Skagit Rule, or look at the Dungeon Nest Rule. Well, all over those rules, there's an express recognition of the interaction between surface and groundwater, and that's just not there in the 1980 rules. So one of the things that the RIA 13 rule does, and, and we've actually told a court this, but it never ruled on it, and that was in a, in a Johns Creek litigation over in RIA 14, but basically, the RIA 13 rule does this too. It illegally exempts from in-stream flows and stream closures domestic uses for single residences if there's no alternative source available. In our view, not only is that a defect, but it's also illegal because ecology's not allowed to do something by rule when its governing statutes don't allow it to. So there's nothing in the governing statutes that says permit exempt wells can be, or domestic uses can be, don't have to obey stream flows in rules. Any questions so far, or should I just keep going?
Yep, go ahead Commissioner Edwards.
Counselor, I wonder if you could give me an example? You said that the exemption doesn't fit or something. Now, could you give me an example that I could relate to on that?
Well, the, the exemption in the rule says that, well, let me back up. Permit exempt wells by law are there, they don't have to, if you want one, you don't have to apply for a permit, but you're subject to all other ecology rules and statutes. What the permit exempt-
Okay, I guess, I thought we did have to do a permit now. It's a $500 fee, and we have to, the, the new person drilling well does have to get a permit, isn't that right?
You always had to, no, you, you, they don't have to get a permit. You're paying, I think the, the $150, correct me if I'm wrong Jeff, but I think that's for your building permit.
Is, is an, is an application fee?
Yeah, $500, I think.
There, there is a new, under S1, this new law, is an application fee now for exempt wells, and that be altered by the direction of the committee as well. But Sharon is right in that, in general, while exempt wells are exactly that, exempt from permits, they are not in any other way exempt from the requirements of state law for the use order.
And that, yeah, could you give me an example of that? That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Oh, like-
A physical example, yes.
Well, for, th- these are wells that individuals who are outside of water systems drill for their own use, domestic in-house use, and outdoors on their property in terms of irrigation.
That used to give them 5,000 gallons, right Jeff? Wasn't that 5,000? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I got 5,000 a day, yes. And, and they, so they, they generally exist outside of the cities, although there is a certain number that still exists from within the cities, but generally they're outside of the cities and outside of water systems. We've got an example of, Sharon mentioned Johns Creek, I know it's over in Mason County, situation where in the Johns Creek Basin, between the time that they, they passed the rule, and the present, when we have conducted analysis of all the wells in the basin, there are over 900 of these exempt wells that have been drilled in that basin, and that's, it's not a large basin, and that's a significant amount of water when you start adding up the potential for 5,000 gallons a day from each of those wells.
And, and especially during the summer, the drier summer months, and early fall that are really critical to salmon habitat? So, so does that answer your question?
Well, it, it kind of gives me a rough idea. I mean, the average usage on wells is around 350 gallons a day, 365 days a year, I mean, on an average home, and I'm trying to figure out an example of where, by drawing, with 900 wells, obviously, it would never be able to handle 5,000 gallons a day, but do you have an example of where because of this issue, you would have a shortage of water? You, you mentioned in the drier months, I'm just wondering, are people, I don't know, running their faucets all the time or something? I, I'm trying to equate a problem that does exist to the potential problem that you're laying out, or is it all just a preemptive, kind of trying to get ahead of any future problem? That's, that's what I'm looking for.
No, it's, it's an existing problem in that all of the, all of the streams in RIA 13 are closed to further appropriation, and that's because they do not meet minimum flows. Those flows were established back in the rule in 1980, and it closed those streams because of the failure to meet those minimum flows, yet there's no mechanism that's been utilized for enforcement to restrict the number of wells. And if, in fact, everyone were limited to 350, it would be a little bit different, but you know, the fact of the matter is, you can use up to 5,000 gallons a day and use it for outdoor uses like irrigation, and of course, those happen during the drier summer months. So Commissioner, it is, it is already a problem, and-
Okay.
That's why we've been trying to, I mean, that was the nature of the Hearst case to begin with, and why we've been trying to find solutions to this, particularly here in the South Sound region, where a lot of the, probably majority of the water usage is groundwater, and it's shallow enough, much of it is shallow enough to be connected to streams.
As part of your analysis, are you taking into consideration like, yes, the 350 gallons a day, that's a, they could surely abuse that, but like every tree that is cut down, every mature tree, and I think that's an average, I think that's something around 250 gallons a day that is not drawn out of that aquifer. Are you familiar with that equation that goes along with that? So I mean, there's, there's a plus and a minus on everything, but is that figured in as well?
Well, I, I'm familiar with the, that argument, and of course, trees both capture water to put into the ground as well as pulling it from the ground for their own transpiration, but I, I would note in the context of that particular claim, that's actually been litigated in, in state court in Washington, and not allowed to be utilized as a mitigation measure for impacts on stream flows.
Okay, I, I just wasn't aware of that. I've talked to our hydrologist, Mr. Hanson, and that's kind of where I picked up that information on some of the discussions I had with him. Matter of fact, that brings me to another question. Has he been involved in this with you folks? Our hydrologist?
I know, well, I, I'm perhaps not the best person to answer that. I know he was involved in the early stages of this planning process. I don't know what his involvement has been of like-
I, I guess I'd ask the county manager that, is that, do you know that?
I think Jennifer can answer that, Ollie.
I, I can, yeah. Our county hydrologist has been involved in a technical level of review of the RIA plans as they've been developed. As you recall from previous briefings, each plan contains a list of projects that are designed to offset the projected water withdrawals from future development in these watersheds, and so our county hydrologist has been involved in a technical level reviewing those projects and helping both frame sort of what that offset would be, and the calculus of the water added or taken out of the system through the development of those projects. So yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm done interrupting now.
Oh, please, the question's coming, it makes it, reminds me that there are people out there, and, and it shows, it shows your interest, so you know, I welcome it. Well, I guess to go back to, you know, why is the, the RIA 13 rule defective? Well, as, as we said, who are, if you want a permit exempt well for your, for your home, or you know, to use it for outdoor use, you don't have to get a permit, but you're, you are subject to all other rules and regulations, but what the rule does, the existing rule is it exempts from the in-stream flows and the stream closures that are in the rule, domestic uses for single residences if there's no alternative source available. In our view, that's, that's illegal because ecology does not have the authority to exempt permit exempt wells from in-stream flows and stream closures. Another thing that the, the RIA 13 rule does that we think is also defective and, and not legal is it, and it's a little bit inconsistent with what I just said, but it actually, it says it allows domestic uses to impact stream flows up to the point that their cumulative effects will seriously affect the quantity of water available for in-stream flows. So basically, there's got to be a huge impact, you know, a serious impact before anything can happen, and we're not even sure what happens. Again, that's not anywhere in the RCWs, the statutes, and we don't think that that should stand. Another thing is, is that ecology does not enforce these rules, and you know, it's not, these, the RIA 13 rule is not really written in a way that makes it readily enforceable, so because of the things that I've been telling you.
Sharon, just to maybe a follow-up on that then. Has ecology, apparently their interpretations of the law are different, I guess, than yours and the tribe's, and has that been litigated, or is it in the process somewhere of being litigated so that we're not wondering, well, who's, you know, you get 10 attorneys in the room, you got 10 different opinions sometimes, and so I'm just curious if, is that in the process of being litigated? What does ecology say about it?
Well, certainly nothing about RIA 13's being litigated, and I'm not aware that that precise issue is currently being litigated. I can tell you that ecology took a position in the Hearst case, and that's the next point in my memo, that because the RIA 1 rule, that was up at the NOOCSEC, which is, the RIA 1 rule didn't expressly regulate permit exempt wells, ecology said it doesn't regulate permit exempt wells. That was not a focal point of the litigation, and we think ecology was flat wrong, but that case was really about what the county had to do and didn't have to do. But I guess I'm telling you this because what I don't think, I mean, what, I don't think the county wants to be in a place where it can, it, it's, it feels like it's not, that permit exempt wells are just, they can, they can grow and grow and grow at any amount at the expense of, of the stream flow, with no regulation whatsoever. So you've got a defective rule right now that is really not, not working. Jeff, did you want to say something?
Yes, in response to the commissioner's question, no, we're not aware that that particular question has been litigated, but I, I think that everyone is kind of in a holding pattern because of this law, and they're waiting to see what the outcome of this law is relative to providing mitigation for more exempt wells. And if, I, I, I think it's fair to say, and I guess I should add, that we are certainly considering it, that if one or more of these plans are deficient, and we feel that they are not responding to the exempt well issue, then I think the real question is, you know, when down the road does litigation happen? And, you know, I, we are participating in all these to see what the outcome is, but I think when the question is ripe, after the process concludes and ecology makes their decision, that's when you would see potential litigation.
Just one follow-up, I hate to keep bugging, but you mentioned that 900 wells there, but they were in Mason County. What is Mason County doing at this point in time? Is there some negotiation going on there to see if we can all get on the same sheet of music, so to speak?
Well, Mason County is a more complicated situation for the Squawson Island Tribe, both because they, the tribe's reservation of course is located in Mason County, but also because the tribe has an existing MOU with the county regarding their planning process and their implementing regulations dealing with water. So that is to say that, you know, I think in general, the 14, the RIA 14 plan is not at the same level that RIA 13 is, but for the tribe, the circumstances are different in that we may be able to address those issues through the MOU that we have and not through the planning process.
Could that apply to us?
Yes.
Well, it could, I guess, but I, I would note that we, we arrived at that point because we brought lawsuit against their comprehensive plan adoption.
Oh, okay, okay, never mind, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Let me ask Commissioner McGee if she's got something at this point.
Not at this point. I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. So we still have a good amount of time, but I kind of want to ask, like, you know, kind of jumping to the endpoint, like what is the, what is the suggestion in terms of our watershed plan? What is the specific suggestion that you're proposing the board do to help make this better from your perspective?
Well, the tribe in the process has advocated for specific rulemaking to be included for specific rulemaking to be included in the plan. So the, in other words, the plan, if it were adopted, would direct ecology to do rulemaking to, among other things, correct these deficiencies. At present, ecology has not included that, those recommendations in the plan. And while there are certainly other parties, we feel that the county is the most significant along with the tribe and that if we can find any common ground for a, a, a recommendation to ecology to pursue rulemaking, then perhaps we can go back to the plan and, and find a way to amend this late to include that recommendation. That is pretty much the bottom line.
Okay, so two questions from that for me. Are you, would it be, you know, a kind of high level, like, you know, amend this rule, make it better, bring it up to date? Or would you be looking for very specific directives? Like, we want the rule to accomplish this and do that and change. I mean, how specific would you be asking us to get in, in terms of that recommendation?
Well, that's a good question from, and probably not one that I can fully answer because I, I think ecology's lawyers would tell you at least out of one side of their mouth, that if you open up the rule, then you, you can't know the outcome. The, the rulemaking is a process by which you identify the issues you're going to try to address. But, you know, that, you open that up to response from a variety of entities and you're, to some degree, influenced by what those people say. So we could not, in, in requesting the rule to be opened up, we could not dictate what the outcome of that rulemaking would be. So, I mean, you could want one amendment and we could want a different amendment and we could both feel that it's a good idea to open the rule, but we can't dictate that one or the both of us would get our desired outcome.
Good, that, that's an important point, I think, to, to focus in on. The last thing I had was the, I just like my, I think you and I have talked about this, or maybe I talked about it with staff, but I just want to lay it out there for my seedmates' benefit is that you, when you said direct ecology to engage in rulemaking, I mean, we don't, we don't technically have that ability. I mean, it would be subject to their agreeing to, you're saying that if, if that's in there and they adopt the plan and that obligates them in some way to do that? Or could they slough that off?
Well, and I'll let Sharon respond to that in part because we actually think that the law requires them to do rulemaking, but certainly having it as part of a plan that was adopted would, would seem to compel them. Sharon?
Really great question. And, and I've also, though, haven't we heard ecology say that there can be some directed rulemaking? That there, they do have some capabilities to, to focus what the rulemaking is on?
That's what led to my comment about out of one side of their mouth.
Right, but you only told them about one side, there's the other side, so you never know. So we, you know, one good question is, if we get, low and behold, a unanimously approved plan and in that plan, ecology says, we are going to rulemake. I think they're going to have a hard time not rulemaking. So, you know, I mean, I guess I view, I haven't tested this out or done the research on it, but it seems like these plans, if they're unanimously approved, are like contracts. All these parties sign on and ecology is one of the, the members of the committee. And if ecology agrees to do rulemaking, then I think there's an argument to be made that it's bound by that decision. The other thing, though, that I was going to touch on is, is why rulemaking is really required if a plan is going to fall short of what we view a plan should legally have in it? And if you bear with me, I'll just talk, there's just like three or four points that I want to make in this regard. So, but basically, in our view, if you leave the RIAA rule as is, there's going to be more impairment of in-stream flows if the watershed plan falls short in that it doesn't achieve sufficient offsets and that net, that amorphous concept of net ecological benefit or NEB. And here's why. And there's really three reasons. The first one is that the, this new law, the, the Hearst fix, it allows new domestic permit exempt wells to impair in-stream flows and it lets them impact closures as long as there's, quote, compliance with the act. Well, what does that mean? That means largely that there's a watershed plan that ecology adopts, whether it's a unanimously approved plan or if it's not a unanimously approved plan, then it's one that goes, you know, through the process and ecology in the end unilaterally adopts it. And that is true. So the, the, the new, the act lets these new permit exempt wells impair flows, but then it says, as long as, unless, unless in-stream flow rules say otherwise. Okay, so then I think, okay, let's look at the in-stream flow rule. Well, it's certainly, the RIAA 13 rule certainly does not say otherwise. In fact, the rule as it's written is just a mess. So we're really stuck with compliance with the plan, with the act and what's in that plan. So I guess in Squawson's view, if the watershed plan doesn't guarantee sufficient offsets and net ecological benefit, then the rule has to be amended to fully achieve those outcomes. So in other words, there's legal vulnerability. If ecology, if ecology adopts a really defective watershed plan and also doesn't do anything to amend the rules to make up the gap. Does that make sense?
To me, I do, I understand what you're saying, I guess. But do we need to have a consensus or unanimous decision by all the players involved in 13? Or it automatically goes to ecology? Is that kind of the way it looks like it's work?
That's spot on, exactly.
Let me just ask one other question as far as potential litigation. Is there any factor that is involved that in history that would affect this one way or the other? And what I'm specifically referring to is the Deschutes River didn't have a native salmon run in it until about the 1950s or somewhere in there. Is that going to come into play? I'm just, I'm, don't, don't give me, don't take that wrong. I just wonder about it. I'm, I'm wanting to solve this problem. But if that develops, I mean, when we talk about his historical events, is that going to come into play on this? Could that be an argument? But, you know, I guess anything can be an argument, but might that be an argument that raises its head to make it complicated?
We don't think that would be the case because the, the question of enhancement of native runs was resolved early on in the USV Washington case. In fact, resolved by Judge Bolt. And what the state did was attempt to argue that if, if Bolt's decision correct, then it only applied to native fish, to wild runs. And that was, you know, of course, tries to push back in the federal government and the court determined that enhanced runs were still subject to the determinations under USV Washington. So in, in specific contexts, the Deschutes River would be an example of enhanced runs for both Chinook and Coho as they were introduced to the, to the Deschutes River. I would further note that there are other independent streams, Lynn Creek and McLean Creek in RIAA 13 that had native runs in them as well. So don't really think that particular challenge would, would raise its head. What usually confides in this matter is that while, you know, everyone, I think, can pretty much agree that have this senior water right that dates from, you know, well, statehood, the, the, the tribes have not quantified that right. So in like this, we're working with state law and the quantification of in-stream flows under state law and the closure of systems under state law. But ultimately, the tribes, at some point, and, and some are already doing this, will need to pursue a quantification of their rights under, under federal law, their reserved rights under the treaties. And, you know, the, the problem results there in if there is insufficient water to meet that right, then how do you go about taking it back from people? And, you know, of course, we've had to face that issue in both the fishing case and the shellfish case and, you know, found various mechanisms to, to do it. But, you know, it's not pleasant and it can be challenging and expensive.
Okay, thanks.
So given that we're, that we're, we're trying to reach a consensus with respect to this plan, I haven't been at these meetings. If the county were to join, were to agree with the request to include this, is that gonna, are we going to lose other stakeholders that will push back against this in terms of trying to get a, a, you know, a group consensus? Do you have a sense of that?
Maybe Caitlin would be the best person to guess at that question.
Anything you want to say, Caitlin?
I'd say that it doesn't particularly affect other members. So it probably wouldn't, it would just be the amount of time it takes to get everybody together to agree to another draft that might be of concern.
Commissioner, I think your question is astute because, you know, theoretically, it could. I mean, if, if we went in and agreed to alter the proposal, there certainly could be other parties that would speak up against that alteration. And, you know, we, we would have to deal with that consequence. As we stand now, of course, the tribe's in a position of having its proposals frustrated and that's why we're talking.
Yeah, no, I understand. I guess that, another question that I had was, you know, if for whatever reason the board did not want to include this in the plan just based on, you know, the 11th hour nature or not wanting to disrupt other stakeholders or for whatever reason, are there other avenues by which we could work together to, to, you know, open up this rulemaking process? Do we have other choices or is this our best avenue to address this issue?
I, can I speak?
Yeah, please.
Sure, go ahead, Sharon, and I'll follow up.
I'm, I'm going to defer to Jeff on this, but having been down a long and not very successful road where we tried to get ecology to fix the similarly defective RIAA 14 rule in our Johns Creek litigation and ecology saying, it's not our priority, we don't care about fixing the old messed up rules, all we care about is issuing new ones. I think that if you, if you lack the leverage and you, and you try to go get ecology to do something out that it's not going to be as successful. I think that there is leverage here that the county and the tribe can use to get ecology to do the right thing to fix these rules. You know, in a way that, it's certainly, the tribe is not looking to hamstring development, but it is looking to just stop the bleeding by permit exempt wells and other kinds of wells that are junior to these state in-stream flows. I think it's an opportunity and I, I guess, and I don't want you to look at this at all as saber rattling because I'm not like that and the tribe doesn't go to that place. You know, we really try to come to agreements and with folks, but, but I'm going to just explain the, the legal risk here of having a less than good plan and not amending the rule. At least my analysis, granted ecology may not agree, but is that the county will be at legal risk when it's approving stream flow in buildings and subdivisions that impact stream flow. It's going to be at risk until compliance is achieved. The plan is going to be the plan, you know, whatever, whether it's an approved plan, great, or it's ecology issued plan. But if it's a defective plan and the rule doesn't get fixed, I think there's a, a legal argument to be made that counties are going to have to require applicants to provide evidence of legal and physical water availability, kind of where things were right after Hearst. Because in our view, there isn't going to be compliance with the Stream Flow Restoration Act. So that is not by, I guess that's just by way of explaining how the, the, the time right here with the plan, not in final form yet, I think there's more leverage if the county and the tribe and hopefully the others were to agree to, to fix the rule. Jeff, I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
Yes, that we have had numerous meetings with ecology to continue a running debate about the interpretation of this law and what it requires. And one of the specific issues is the question of rule. And we have raised the possibility of what, what about ecology conducting rulemaking even if it were not requested in a plan? So, you know, I just say that to say, well, I mean, I guess there's an outside opportunity besides the plan for convincing ecology to conduct rulemaking. The tribe would have to determine whether their best leverage to accomplish that would be to approve the plan, go along with it and then still request ecology as a matter of good faith to conduct rulemaking or alternatively to disapprove the plan and use that, the threat of the extended outcome to convince them to resolve the issues by conducting rulemaking. So that, there's, there's multiple scenarios that potentially could be carried out. But as Sharon stated correctly, it has been our experience over quite a few years that ecology is generally loathe to conduct rulemaking to address these issues.
I have a question, Commissioner. So I understand the stated, the potential risk for litigation the county may encounter if a rulemaking is not in place. But let me walk you through the scenario. Let's assume the board approves. But let me walk you through the scenario. Let's assume the board approves the proposal by the Squawson Island Tribe to include rulemaking as part of the plan. Let's assume the stakeholders approve the inclusion of the language. And let's assume it's submitted to the ecology and ecology approves it. Then if if ecology is not going through the rulemaking, well, the county is going to be at risk anyways. Even though that we we faithfully or in good faith partnered with the Squawson Island Tribe to include this language on the, on the plan. And yet, just because we don't have control whether ecology is going to do the rulemaking or not, we're going to go back to this, to to square one in terms, in terms of a risk for litigation to the county?
I guess ecology, I think, would have a very, if, 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 if rulemaking, if there was a commitment in the plan to rulemaking and ecology approved the plan, ecology, I think, would, I would argue that it's legally bound to rulemake. And, you know, the tribe would then consider enforcing that against ecology. I, I, but I understand the question that you're asking, but I would like to think that if it gets in the plan, I think I've seen some ecology guidance, you know, it's trying to, it's saying, we're going to rulemake under these very, very, very narrow circumstances. Like, if you increase the amount of the permit exempt well fee, then we have to rulemake just for that. But if it agrees in a plan, I would be, I would be surprised if it didn't follow through.
Do they have the ability to, when they do their review and approval, can they, like, extract things out or amend things in any way? Could they just take that out, say, well, we're not doing that?
Well, if it's a unanimously approved plan, I think that is the plan.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think those are the conditions. If it's, i- i- if it's by consensus, the ecology is bound to approve it.
Yeah.
Right, they'd have to kick it back or whatever. The tribe could say, hey, we only agreed because that was.
I I know there's only eight minutes. Could I ask, could I ask for information, Commissioner?
Yeah, please.
So next week, there is a briefing on Wednesday. The staff is going to go through the YR thirteen. Would it be possible to get a specific language that you're looking for to be included on the plan before next week? That's a request to you.
I will volunteer an answer for Sharon to work on it. I'm sure we could, I'm sure we could make a short deadline.
Because I, 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 I think the, I, I understand the, the, they, they ask. I mean, now, I think it will be good for the board to have some specific language for them to have a decision-making process well informed.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Well, the reason I'm confident that we can meet a short deadline is that, as I indicated earlier, we had made proposals in the planning process. And we can go back to those and, you know, update them and edit them for the circumstances and provide them to you. I don't think that's a problem.
Hey, Ty?
Yes, good, Commissioner.
I've had my hand up, but I, I've tried to, I tried to not interrupt too much, but I don't know, you must not be able to see it, huh?
I'm sorry, I wasn't monitoring that box. I have to open that box and I.
Oh, okay. Well, well, I just, one other question. It seems like, Jeff, one of the examples of the, you know, when you said the nine hundred wells at five thousand each. Yeah, granted, I guess that's a potential. But any new wells under the Hearst decision now, I believe they're all limited to, I don't know, somewhere around nine hundred gallons a minute in that drainage. Isn't that the case?
Yes, they are limited under certain circumstances and that can be modified by the plan as well. The, for instance, we have offered proposals for like a drought response plan that under certain conditions that consumption be further restricted. So, I mean, tho- those kind of things can be incorporated into the plan. And I guess the, the question that is, you know, we haven't really researched is whether in the absence of a plan, an agreed-upon plan, that number would revert to the previous five thousand gallons. And I can't answer that one for you.
Yeah, okay. Well, I I'm just questioning if that played in here anyway. Okay, we're going to talk about it more, it sounds like. Okay.
It's a good question. And I don't have the answer as far as what, whether it reverts. It says, I, I think the law mentions that, but if there, it is relevant to the discussion that if the plan is going to change the, the per day withdrawal amount, then that does have to be, go into a rule. So there would be limited rulemaking for that.
I wonder how that fits with, I don't know, the few individuals that are going to object under, I don't know, long-established water rights or something like that. I can't imagine, I, not very many people, I'm sure, use that, but like you say, during the summer months and they're watering a big garden or pasture, I suppose anything is possible. I do think, though, that we might run into, if we arbitrarily say, okay, in the summer between July and September, or whatever it is, you're restricted to this. I don't know that we've got the authority to do that and supersede whatever the state law was, even under Hearst. So that probably turns into a bag of worms, too. Somebody, if somebody wants to object to it.
Well, not if it goes in a rule. Not if it goes into a rule.
So a rule can supersede whatever a past precedence and law allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we got three minutes. So I'm just going to ask for a final, there's a final comment or a question? Romero, Josh?
No, thank you. I'm just taking it in right now.
Yeah, it's a lot. So I appreciate that. Well, we really appreciate your time and this information and I'm I really wish I hadn't missed that September twenty-third meeting. A lot there that I, maybe we could have moved this discussion forward, but we are where we are and we'll, we'll definitely consider this.
Thank you so much, and I really appreciated all your questions.
Yes, thank you, and we will get you some language to consider by next week.
Thank you, Josh. Thanks, everybody. The board will be back in two minutes for a bond issuing.